This is the common council meeting of Tuesday, July 7, 2015. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Bakovic.
Here.
Verhaelen.
Here.
Alderman Tolman.
Here.
Alderman Gale is excused. Alderman Guzekowski.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Item three is the approval of minutes of June 16, 2015.
Kirkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of June 16, 2015.
Bakovic will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakovic.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Under recognition, item four is a consideration of resolution number 11622-070715. It's a resolution of gratitude to Lawrence J. Haskin for dedicated service as city attorney. At his request, we won't read the actual resolution. We had a nice event forum last week, right? Celebrating his achievements in 30 years. Larry's asked us to make a few comments. No long speeches tonight, Larry. I don't want to have to cut you off.
Yeah, three minutes, right?
Three minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll try to keep it to three minutes. Somebody asked me why I didn't want to stay on and continue, so I go to a couple of meetings at the new city hall and what's not here tonight? My prop, oh, there it is, okay. My prop is here. And my stock answer is I couldn't conceive of going over to a meeting at a place where a garbage can wasn't in the middle of the meeting room. So, you know, I just couldn't even think about doing that. I just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for all the support over the years and just share with you a couple of thoughts. One is, I mentioned last week at the retirement gathering, that I think all of you, I think the council members, the mayor, have the toughest job in the city. You have a very difficult job. You get paid very little. It's really a matter of public service and you do a terrific job. And over the last couple of years, the common council has just made some really, really important decisions for this city, whether it's to relocate city hall and the library, the Drexel Town Square, to equip the library, to open up this spot for the expansion of the high school, to open up a spot for a new elementary school, for all the lakefront development that's going on, the Drexel Interchange, Oakview Business Park. I mean, all these things are very transformative decisions and I think they're bold and visionary and you've made great decisions to reshape this community. I think the way that the council has gone about this the last couple of years is the right way, which is, you know, get all the information, ask the tough questions, debate things seriously, disagree with one another, take your vote, and then move on and support the decision that the council has made. I think that's the right way to govern and it's been a terrific recipe for success over the last couple of years. And it should always be not who gets credit for the decision or whose idea was it, but was it a good idea? And that's really the way to go about things. So, I thank the council for all their support and all the great work that you do in meeting the tough challenges that the city has. I also just want to publicly here thank all the employees that I've had the absolute privilege and honor to work with over the last 30 years. I've just had, it's just been terrific to work with so many dedicated public employees that their sole goal is to do what's right for the citizens of this community. And what they do on a daily basis impacts the lives of everybody in this community. You know, there's this saying that all politics is local and what we do at this level, it's the city government level, affects people's lives more than any other level of government. And I'm just really proud to have served with so many great and talented public employees. I want to congratulate Melissa on her appointment and wish her nothing but the best of luck. I'm confident that she's gonna do a really terrific job for the city. So, I'm looking forward to the first and third Tuesdays of the month, maybe cracking open a cold one and sitting back and watching common council meetings. So, I'm looking forward to that.
I hope you don't spend your time doing that.
It's a hobby.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Tremendous career with this city and obviously a lot of the things that you talked about couldn't have happened without your help and vision and leadership as well. And I think I said the same thing last week. You make all of us, or three weeks ago, you make all of us look better and you make us a lot more productive, so thanks for that. Before you leave, I want to make sure you get your nameplate, so take that as a souvenir. We didn't frame it up for you or anything. So, I just need a resolution on number four.
Can I just say something?
Absolutely. Alderman Tolman?
I just want to thank Larry personally for the years of service he put in and especially an extra thank you to Holly for putting up with all those years and all those extra meetings and hours because we know, anybody that's known Larry personally in the last few years, he could have pulled the plug probably three to four years earlier and he decided to stay on and see some of these major issues through that we're dealing with right now, so a special thanks for that. You've been, the sports analogy probably that you would most appreciate because you're into sports would be you've been the go-to guy for this city for many years and thank you for that.
Well said. Any other comments before the resolution? Resolution.
Tolman will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11622, resolution of gratitude to Lawrence J. Haskin for dedicated service as city attorney.
Bakovic will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bakovic.
Aye.
Good luck. Item five is a public hearing for a request submitted by Mike Arioldi, Arioldi Brothers, Craig Amers, PC Logistics, and Joseph Campione for a conditional use permit allowing automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of the property located at 7350 South 10th Street in the first district. Doug? Catherine, sorry.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Mike Arioldi, Arioldi Brothers, Craig Amers, PC Logistics, and Joseph Campione for a conditional use permit allowing automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of the property located at 7350 South 10th Street. The applicant is Mike Arioldi, Arioldi Brothers. Property owner is 7350 South 10th Street LLC. There follows the legal description. The date of the notice is June 11, 2015.
Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the director of community development for the City of Oak Creek. This is a request for a conditional use permit for the property at 7350 South 10th Street that will allow for automobile and truck engine and body repair as well as storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of that property. The proposal is utilize an existing 5,000 square foot building on the property for truck engine repair and the existing stone area with cement trailer parking pad for outdoor storage of trailers. There are two paved parking areas accommodating eight vehicles, each which are located on the east and west sides of the building. And here's, this is the property I'll show you is an aerial which will show you the existing 5,000 square foot building as well. You can see the paved area as well, as well as there are additional non-paved areas on the site which we'll talk about a little bit later. It is anticipated that it would be six employees on site for the first and second shift with the proposed hours of operation be continuous for 24/7. Really, the municipal code in section 170403, I believe, requires all off-street parking lots to be paved and the applicants through the plan commission process have indicated that they do not wish to pave the existing stone area. That being the case, staff has recommended that the storage of vehicles and equipment be confined to the paved concrete area of the site and should the applicant seek to utilize the gravel areas of the site for additional storage of vehicles or equipment, they would need to pave them in accordance with the municipal code. Again, as I said, the issue of the paving of truck and trailer areas was discussed by the commission and it's important to know that the staff does support the requirement for paving. Aside from the precedent that would be set by allowing this area to remain unpaved, there are other practical considerations for requiring the paving in accordance with municipal code, I believe this. The city engineer, sorry, the environmental engineer did indicate that he would recommend that the area be paved as well citing that the city has dredged the Receiving Creek twice in the last 15 years due in part, a large part, to the material removed from the unpaved parking lots, not specifically this lot, but unpaved lots in general. So, they also unpaved parking areas and storage areas do have a tendency to expand over time. There's several examples, we can go into those if you feel. It just creates additional enforcement problems, you know, what is the actual area that they're storing on, you know, are they expanding the limits of that storage area? And it's actually more enforceable to control if the areas paved, a clear delineation of what should be there, shouldn't be there. And recall as part of the conditional use permit as well that the storage of vehicles on the site is limited to those which are currently being repaired at the facility. So, I don't think anyone wants to see this become, the principal use of this becomes the storage of equipment or vehicles. The principal use is and should always be the repair of those vehicles and the storage should be incidental to what's going on in that building. At the commission meeting, the applicants did indicate a preference for leaving the area unpaved citing potential damage to the paved areas due to maneuvering of trailers on the site. I guess there are many examples of similar businesses in the city who do utilize truck and trailer storage, most of which are paved. There are some which are unpaved. There aren't a lot of those that perceive the requirement for paving, however. While staff certainly is sensitive to the economic impact of the requirement to pave, we also have a responsibility to maintain citywide standards with respect to protecting property values and that's why we are proposing and the plan commission as part of the conditions and restrictions did forward a document to you that does require the property to be paved, understanding of course that you certainly have the discretion to adjust that if you feel appropriate. This is a public hearing. I request that anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to allow for automobile and truck engine repair and storage of vehicles and equipment for the property at 7350 South 10th Street to please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment on this item. First call?
Craig Amers, 25130, Loomis Drive, Wind Lake, Wisconsin. I represent PC Logistics, Arioldi Brothers, for this project here. For parking on the gravel, the reason we're asking for, we don't want to put motorized vehicles on the gravel. We understand the reasoning behind it for the pavement. The only thing we're looking to put on that gravel there is to put some trailers there. We're actually looking at relocating our trailer repair facility into that area, so it makes sense. To park in front of the building would be the only other area to park trailers. Right now, the vegetation's there, there's a 250-foot cement apron there for the landing gear of the trailers. So, everything ends up, here's how, right there, here's how it would look. It was previously, the previous owners prior to Joseph Campione in there, when they owned the building or prior to them, this is how it was utilized. And we would like to do the same thing there. We've talked to the Campiones about it and they, they're very strong believers in, you know, they're gonna do whatever's right there. You know, eventually, this whole property could get paved over. We're just gonna be renting from them. But as Sal Campione told me, he's already dumped $15 million into this property and right now economically, it's not feasible for them to do that. They need to invest in their employees. This also helps us at Arioldi Brothers by being able to move over here. You know, we'll be paying a significant amount to the Campiones to use that property which will allow them to free up capital to eventually, you know, possibly pave this lot. You know, as Sal said, they always do it the right way. Their remodel over in the other industrial park that they did, they did a very good job. We're not looking to expand this. It's already set by wildlife boundaries over there. There's no, you know, there's no way we could really expand without, you know, the city coming up and saying, hey, you know, we've noticed that, you know, the gravel's expanding out, we have no intention. We would like to use, utilize the south side of the lot for trailer storage, keep any vehicles that are motorized, all of our tractors or any stray trucks or anything like that on the paved area. So, I think any significant damage that a trailer could do to the ground would be limited to its turning out there, you know, just turning on the lot. I don't think any leakage or anything like that we'd have to worry about out there. Again, ideally, it's set for that. I think if we had to go back to planning or working with the planning department and then set lines up to put trailers in the front of the building, you know, we're looking at kind of an eyesore out there then, you know? And it really doesn't work for our needs as a company either to, you know, put five or 10 trailers in the front of a building, then we're kind of advertising them out there for theft or things like that. We'd much rather kind of hide them off to the side so when people drive by, they're not seeing vehicles out there. For the industrial park, it'd be nice to have, you know, we'll have people there from 6:00 AM to probably 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, right? So, additional people in the, out in that area, you know, kind of help with theft and things like that out there too. You know, we have additional eyes out there on the lot. So, for us on the Arioldi side, it would free up room on our lot that we can put vehicles over here. I don't think, you know, there's a, I know in that industrial park, there's a lot of gravel lots already and I understand with the change, how the regulations written, but for us to put that kind of money into the lot, in all honesty, is not feasible for renting and at this time for the Campiones, it would not be, it's not feasible for them to do it either. You know, we ask that you allow us to grow in the Oak Creek community. You know, between us and Joseph Campione, we employ about 600 people in this community and we'd like to keep growing that in the community here. We don't want to have to take our vehicles, our overflow vehicles and look outside the city. This is perfect location for us. It's about a mile or so from our current location on Sixth Street and I think it'd be a win-win all the way around.
Thanks for your comments. Second call for comments?
Mike Arioldi, 2307 East Oak Street, Oak Creek, Wisconsin. We're actually kind of asking for some help here too. About two months ago, we purchased a company, Civ Truck Leasing, that was a direct competitor of Arioldi Brothers. It was something that we didn't foresee. You were generous enough to let us put a 7,000-square-foot addition on our current building and this deal came about and it added 350 more pieces of equipment, added 30 more employees to our company and we're just kind of playing out of room. We have other locations, but the majority of this came to our corporate location, which is Oak Creek. We've got a few warnings for parking trailers on the street, on Sixth Street. We're next to UPS. It's been kind of a problem. We're leasing some land across the street where we store about 15 trailers. This would tremendously help us out. We have a lot invested in the last year. It's not that we don't want to put money into this or fix it up, it's just right now we're kind of looking for some help. We're kind of landlocked, we don't really know where to go. So, just asking that you would consider that.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Third and final call for public comment on item five. Public hearing. Seeing no one else coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and move to item six, which is a consideration of ordinance number 2769, approving a conditional use permit allowing automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of the property located at 7350 South 10th Street. Alderman Kirkowski.
Some of the comments I was gonna make tonight were already addressed by Mike and Craig. One thing they didn't say is that by the acquisition of that other trucking company now, they are now the largest family-owned truck leasing company in the state of Wisconsin. So, it's nice to have that tagline for a company that's been around in Oak Creek for so long. And I think there's a fine line between what the municipal code says and looking at something on an individual basis and applying some sort of reasonableness or logical explanation to why we want to grant a variance, if that's what we call it. You've got a 250-foot-long slab of concrete that was designed to put the pads of trailers down and then back trailers up in rather close proximity to one another for the purposes that they want to use here. And you've got the area that is hidden by or covered by trees and the like in that area. And then when you're talking about moving trailers on concrete versus gravel, you're talking about wear and tear on the tires versus just moving the gravel around when you move the tires. I really think this is a perfect case for looking at the needs of a company that does the tremendous amount of business in Oak Creek and granting a variance and granting the exception that the plan commission has put forth and allowing them to put these trailers here. If the concrete slab is 250 feet long, then we know that the trailers will not go further than 250 feet. I'm sure that, I'm sure that the trailers will only go on that concrete slab because that's what it's designed for. We've got a good company, we've got, you know, and we've all heard the stuff about, you know, and how many people they employ here in Oak Creek and I just think that we need to consider a reasonable approach to a logical and a needed situation. So, that is, that's my comments with regards to this and I would ask that the, you know, the council considers the conditional use permit with the modification that they allow this. And I understand that they're happy with everything else that's in the document. It's just this one small piece that they want, they'd like a variance on and that would be my request.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other comments from the council? Alderman Bakovic?
I did see this come through planning better than a month ago at that particular time and these are always kind of tricky subjects to tackle when you have municipal code and you think you're gonna set a precedent. Again, they're kind of renting, so that investment, I thought, was a little unnecessary at this time given what they're doing with the trailers and we do have a few in the city that do have the gravel. I supported it with the gravel, the way it was that particular night. I was ready to kind of go with it then. Having learned the facts of the history of the company, which I really knew nothing about, it puts a little more credence to it because they want to call Oak Creek home and I think, I think it's a productive piece of property. I guess my question is, what did Campione do with that stone area anyways that it never got paved in the first place?
They just bought it.
They just bought it?
Yeah, that wasn't original.
What did the previous company do with it? I can't remember who was there.
That was Philworth.
Oh, that was the food place?
Baking place, yeah.
Okay. I guess either way, if we make it a conditional use permit, I know normally it's year-to-year and we come back and now, once they have it, they have it. Again, I would trust that if nothing else to help control the erosion, once you get settled, you put a curbing in there to prevent any spread of the, of the stone. At this point in time though, I agree with first district Alderman. I would support it for this particular business.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other comments from the council? Alderman Verhaelen?
Well, we're going right down the line, so the only reservations I would have with something like this is we had a similar situation in the third district where I live with a company that moved in and gave them conditional uses and they didn't fulfill their obligation and violated a lot of conditions that are conditional use, but I don't see this happening. As far as the parking versus the condition of the lot already, I could see if they were proposing to put a gravel parking lot in here, but the gravel already exists. So, the erosion and whatever's going into the ditch is an existing problem already, no matter what we have going on on the lot. I mean, the lot is there already, so even if you don't put any trailers there, you're still gonna have an erosion problem. So, I would be more comfortable if there was a number of trailers that we'd let be parked there versus an unlimited number, so they didn't, you know, say we can park 10 trailers there and then there's 200 trailers there in six months, you know? I'd feel comfortable myself, let them use the area for parking, but have a specific number of trailers that would be allowed to be parked there at any one time.
Thank you, Alderman. I'll go to Doug and then to Alderman Tolman.
All right, thank you. And following up on Alderman Verhaelen's issue there, I would agree that if the council were to consider allowing the use of that non-paved area for trailer parking, first of all, one of the items in the conditions and restrictions, I mean, this is not for the storage of trailers, it's not. It's for the temporary maximum 14-day storage of trailers which are being worked on the facility. And should the council choose to allow the non-paved areas to remain, they should do so and require the owner and the lessy to provide a plan as to specifically where those trucks will be parked and the maximum number of vehicles to be parked. So, that, you're right, Alderman Verhaelen, there is no question when it comes to code enforcement, it's black and white. You can have so many vehicles and this is where you can have them.
Alderman Tolman?
Doug, in your report, you have Receiving Creek in here. Is there, is there any waterway here that's gonna be impacted? I don't see anything.
That came from the engineering department and, I mean, everything drains to somewhere.
Okay.
The north branch of the Oak Creek certainly is in the vicinity.
I see the floodway there, but, okay.
Oh, sorry.
The north branch of the Oak Creek is in the immediate vicinity of the properties up and down 10th Street. There's that center channel, so these parking areas make their way to inlets on the properties and then flow to that channel. So, that's the area that's been dredged twice within the last 15 years, so.
10th Street?
Yes.
All right, okay.
Thank you, Alderman. Pretty applicant, what's your magic number? Alderman Verhaelen cited, and director of community planning and development, Mr. Seymour stated that there should be a number. What's your magic number?
I think we'd like to, on the trailer side, utilize the 250-foot area, so at 250 feet, I can't imagine where that number could ever probably creep above 30 at any given time. That would be, that would be, that would probably fit into the 250-foot.
How many trailers is that?
30 trailers.
And you're gonna be working on 30 trailers at one time in the 5,000 square foot building?
No, not, they wouldn't all be working on at the same time, but I'm just saying, the most I could ever probably fit inside a 250-foot area would be 30 trailers.
So, how many trailers would you be working on at one time in that facility?
Well, if we had them there in a 14-day period, depending on if it just needed a service, a service could be done in a few hours, but it might need to be there overnight. So, sure, you could put 30 trailers there and then rotate them through and work on them in a 14-day period.
Alderman Kirkowski?
In my discussions with Craig and Mike about this issue, it was clearly defined that this is a service area, that it's not gonna be a storage area for tractor, for trailers, that they are going to be bringing in trailers that are gonna be needing service because of all this, everything that they've accumulated now from this other company and their own stuff. So, the trailers are gonna be coming and going, coming and going, and I think it's reasonable that, you know, they won't be there for longer than 14 days. You're gonna see, you could see five trailers there, you could see 10 trailers there, you know, this trailer comes and goes, they come and go, and it's gonna be a fluid situation. So, it seems reasonable that you've got 250 feet of concrete that is available for trailers, but doubtful you're ever gonna have 30 trailers there because it seems like it's gonna be tough to work on 30 trailers at one time. So, you're gonna, I think the question that Doug has is how many trailers? The trailers is 250 feet worth of concrete slab. That is the amount of trailers that you could fit in there. If you can fit 30, you can fit 20, depending on how they're parked. You know, I can't back those things in very well, but, you know, these guys can, so, but understand that it's gonna be fluid, where they're gonna come and go, they're gonna come and go, you're not gonna see, you may see 15 white trailers in there, but they're all gonna have different numbers and they're gonna come and go and come and go. Did I describe that accurately?
Yes, you did. I would not expect any trailer to remain on that property without movement more than three days, you know? And as you said, you might see, there's probably gonna be given days where you could drive by there, there'll be no trailers at all on that lot. And then, you know, on a Friday night, we might have, you know, 10 trailers show up and then that way, you know, on the weekend, we can knock out service. Some of our customers, you know, they utilize these vehicles, these trailers throughout the week and the easiest time for us to get services done is the weekend when they're not in service. So, our biggest time where, sure, we could really bring in a lot of trailers, would be, you know, Friday into the weekend and then they'd all be moving out again, hopefully by Monday or Tuesday at the latest, once the required services... by Monday or Tuesday at the latest, once the required services are done.
So again, it's not a storage area, and I hope every...
It's a service area.
A service area, yes. Thank you.
So it sounds like the Aldermen have some consensus that they feel that this isn't allowable use for conditional purposes and that there may be a magic number. I would caution that you don't want to fill that sucker up so that it becomes an eyes source, so be wary of the number that you apply to this use. But I'll just wait for the motion.
All right, I want to word this correctly. Kukowski will make a motion to consider ordinance number 2769 approving a conditional use permit allowing for automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of the property located at 7350 South 10th Street and modifying the conditional use permit allowing trailers to be stored on the gravel area of the property utilizing not to exceed the 250-foot slab of concrete.
So you're not putting a hard number on it?
I'm not putting a hard number. I'm just limiting it to that slab of concrete. And if they park them right and they can get 25 in there, that's fine. If they don't park them close and can only get 10, it shall not exceed that length of That's my motion, somewhat worded.
Need a second.
It's not what I was really expecting. I thought it'd be simpler to understand. I think Doug's point was well-taken, and Mark said maybe we assign a number to it. Mathematically, he...
Okay.
I'd be happy with 20.
Yeah, he said 30.
25.
25.
20.
Okay, I will amend my motion.
20.
What's that?
20.
You make the motion. You make the motion, you need a second.
All right.
We're not bidding on numbers.
That's right, I understand. I had to put my reading glasses back on here. Do I hear? Yeah, okay. All right, Kukowski will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2769 approving a conditional use permit allowing automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of the property located at 7350 South 10th Street, modifying the conditional use permit that would allow for the parking of trailers on the property, on the gravel property, not to exceed 20 trailers.
Okay.
Bukavitch will second.
Comfortable with that motion?
Is, did I?
I'm answering you.
Melissa's got her first objection.
How many am I allowed?
As many as you want.
Many as you want.
So long as it's clarified that it is 7350 South 10th Street, allowing automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles and equipment with that limitation as to the conditions and restrictions as it relates to the conditional use permit.
I have another question, as long as we're on that exact address. Does that address take up both properties or just this property? Or is this one included with the big factory as well? Does it have its own address?
Doug?
I don't think so.
It is one property.
But we are only talking about the front part of the property that is being leased by Aroldi's.
Then it should be stated that it's the property leased by Aroldi, so you don't have overrun the stuff onto the other property as well, correct?
That being the case, I would advise potentially, if the first and second concur, to require the submittal of the leased area by the applicants to incorporate as part of the conditional use permit.
Yep.
Because otherwise, you could do that on the whole properties. This conditional use would extend to the other building as well, correct?
No, we're talking about just the stone area.
No, no, I mean for the usage.
Do the motion maker and the second concur?
Yeah, I do, sure.
Okay.
Sure, I mean, if the ordinance contains this property description, it may already be limited to what we're talking about.
I think it's an important clarification, and we don't want them spread over that massive property.
I agree.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. Roll call.
Alderman Tillman?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item 7 under New Business. It's a resolution, consideration of resolution number 11626-070715 authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations. You, Bridget?
Because we are not having a second meeting in the month of July, I again have brought forward a resolution asking that we can proceed in cutting checks as if we were having that meeting and bringing two vendor summary reports to you for the first meeting in August. If we do not cut checks in between that time period, we are going a few weeks here, four weeks in between, and that will create some late fees and past-due bills.
Any discussion? Seeing none, motion on seven?
Bukavitch will make a motion to have the common council adopt resolution number 11626-070715 authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Kukowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kukowski?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bukavitch?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Item made is a consideration of resolution number 11628-070715 adopting a three-year financial plan for the City of Oak Creek. Bridget?
In 2012, the city staff, the prior finance director, as well as the finance committee, worked together to create a three-year financial plan. That three years was up here in 2015. So we have worked through two fairly lengthy finance committee bouts going through with the committee on updating this plan, making sure that it is a living document, a document that staff continues to utilize as guidance for our financial direction. It is something that is critical to the financial operations of the city. We have clarified some language in updating it to be more of a reality. Some of the language in the 2012 version was, this is our plan. Now that plan is established, and we just want to maintain that plan. We also have added some sections based on conversation with Moody's as we've been going through some of our rating phone calls throughout that process when we've issued debt. So positive things about the standing of our retirement system, about the positive work that we have done in terms of our OPEB liability. So just getting some of that additional information in here to make this a really useful and a critical document for our operations. So attached in your packet, you have the resolution which adopts and brings this plan into acceptance, as well as the redline version that I left for you so you could see the changes that were recommended and voted on with the finance committee since our 2012 version.
When did they vote on that?
The last June, the June meeting, which I don't remember the date. It was June.
Month ago.
Just for the public's information, who's on the committee?
We have citizen member Zach Olson, we have Alderman Mike Toman, Alderman Ken Gale, and Alderman Dan Bukavitch.
Okay. Mr. Deggner, were you done?
We also have ex officio, city clerk, city treasurer, city administrator, and myself on the committee.
Okay.
And you, I'm sorry.
Ex officio.
Apologize.
Mr. Deggner?
Mayor Schafidi and council members, Arden Deggner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I've looked at cursory examination of these documents, and all I see is tremendous debt. This is the function of this financial plan, how much debt we can swallow without shaking the city. Is this the only financial plan? No. Most organizations, including our own households, have to be on a pay-as-you-go basis. We don't have, at least I don't, I don't own a charge card. Why? Well, just think, $35 every time you're a day late making the payment on any of these charge cards. Just think, that is the way individuals have to try to sustain life with all these increases that are shown in these graphs, big red bars going up. And so what is the approach? My first question would be, is the city operating in the past like many school districts that have to borrow in the fall until the tax payments come in? Is this a standard procedure in the city?
No, this is not. We have healthy cash reserves. We do not have to borrow to float any type of cash flow at all.
That's encouraging because it looks to me like 15% or 20% fund balance might not be sufficient to prevent this kind of financial problem.
15% to 20% fund balance is what is recommended as your best practices from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a nationwide organization.
I'm zeroing in on, it's difficult at this time to make these statements. However, I do have a listing here of indirect debt as of August 2013. Oak Creek Franklin School District was 46 million. We know it's probably double that now. Amount of debt within the city, 38 million. Milwaukee County debt within the city of 40 million. Milwaukee County Metropolitan Sewerage District, 49 million. Milwaukee Area Technical College, 3 million. That was in 2013. We have an indirect debt of 135 million. We are in the same shape as Greece.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Deggner. Bridget, how would you assess Moody's evaluation of our city finances?
Our evaluation through Moody's has been nothing but continued positive words from them. We, as requested by the finance committee, Moody's has put in our most recent debt rating, citing that we have above-average wealth indices, stable financial operations with solid reserves, elevated debt burden that is subject to moderate refinancing risk, and affordable pension liabilities as rationale for our AA2 rating. Additionally, Moody's cited that moderation in the city's debt burden and expansion and sustained growth of the city's tax base could make the rating increase from our healthy and stable AA2.
Thank you. City Administrator?
I would echo that, that we have the outside financial experts that rate our debt. We go through a very rigorous review with Moody's. I think most of, all of you should get the debt book that's issued every time we issue debt, and it's available on our website. Moody's has consistently praised the financial, conservative financial management. We've made significant progress over the last even three and four years in terms of how we've operated our finances. That's been noted by Moody's. We've reduced OPEB liability, which is in the report, from 89 million to 51 million. We've stabilized healthcare costs. We've maintained fund balances at times when there's little revenue growth by making the tough decisions that we need to make. So not just what the finance director and myself would point out, but the good housekeeping folks, which in this case would be the Moody's, rating has consistently noted prudent and good financial management. And as Bridget said, we have hopes to even increase that debt rating. And I think as we see the development that goes in in some of our TIF districts, as we recover from the 2008 reduction, we were at about $3.2 billion in assessed value, and I think we had gotten down to 2.7, 2.8. We're starting to see that recover right now. That gets noted by Moody's, and we're expecting we may have some opportunity to actually increase that rating. This last year, we had a positive general fund balance. It was near half a million dollars. And as the council knows, the previous years to that, we had stable fund balances, except when we have purposely made decisions to take that fund balance down and to make payments on accrued liabilities in terms of sick days and others. So again, prudent financial management, and I think the council, or the community, and as the council knows, should be very pleased with an excellent record that we have in terms of not only the debt rating, but the financial management that we have through the budget process annually. So there are many opportunities to look at the finances. This financial plan is a best management practices, as Bridget has indicated. The finance committee has also gotten from the staff capital improvement costs for streets and sidewalks and any number of things so that we know what those long-term costs are. We're developing some of those programs a little bit and still building some of the financial management and programming that we have. So we're looking for continuous improvement. We're not done yet, and I would echo the cost that we have very good conservative financial management. I think Paul Thompson noted for the commission, or the council, at the last bond issue, we had only a very small amount of GO bond. That most of our debt is payable through the TIF districts and payable from sources that are clear. We have very little of our debt that's payable by the residents and businesses of this community. So that's a very enviable position to be in, and he noted that for the group, and I would note that again for the council and the public here and at home.
Thanks for that input. Questions from the council? Alderman Bukavitch?
More of a statement as being part of that financial team that helps draft. And I will say, I do more review than draft. That's the facts. It's not my expertise. But really, this lays the groundwork to help maintain the services that the citizens expect for what tax levy will allow us to do. I won't argue with you that the city has invested in multiple projects that will pay dividends later on to the people that will sit up at this council, probably long after I'm gone. But again, I look at it as an investment in the city. I think we're being well-run. I think we're being prudent in what we're trying to accomplish. Again, is it a document without any holes? Probably not, but everybody on that group really did their due diligence to try to get in what's right within three years. And I can tell you, sitting here for the number of years I have, every three years, everything looks completely different again. Things change, not only from the state, but locally. Opportunities come, opportunities pass. So really, Bridget said, it's a fluid document, and it allows for that, too. But more importantly, our rating is there. So when the opportunities come, we are prepared to lay this groundwork for future generations, and I think the city will be better for it.
Alderman Kukowski, then a resident?
I just want to, first of all, thank the finance committee for working on this. I think as others have brought it before, this is a plan. It provides factual information. It's not conjecture. The main purpose is it provides us guidance for all of us, and it helps preserve our long-range plan and make fiscally responsible decisions. It's a very much an objective approach, and it's pretty unique in city government. So I think we need to... So, I think we need to continue to look forward and not dwell on the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the common council. My name is Dimitri Grabowski, and I reside at 9858 South Deer Path Drive in the 5th District. And I'm reading from the three-year financial plan. If you would be able to go to page two, I'm looking at the tax rate stability, and I'm looking for clarification. It says the city will explore all options and revenue sources, including the city water and sewer utility when considering any future debt burden. My understanding is that the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility is not, nor it should be considered, a revenue source. So, I'd like some clarification as to, is this to remain in the document, or where is this situated at this point in time?
Bridget?
As this is a plan, and it is a working document, without keeping our hands tied, we have to have the ability to be able to have conversations with every part of the city, wherever it may be, to be able to discuss potential options, to work together in the climate that we're in. So, as a potential option to continue talking through stuff, to continue looking at our options, it is here as a plan. It is not that this is something that is going to happen. It is an option. That was part of, when we talked with the Finance Committee, where we were looking at was, we have to make sure that we are not restricting ourselves, because we don't want to be breaking our own policy. This is a guidance. It gives us our options, and that's, you know, the point of why this is a living and breathing document, because it ebbs and flows as we do and as we react and go through the course that we are dealt through this environment right now.
Okay, and then my second question is, going to item three, which is the financing, capital, equipment, and ongoing road maintenance. The city has dedicated funding of approximately $1 million for the annual road maintenance program or projects. So, for CIP, you're only putting in $1 million, is that correct?
We have a million that's directly allocated to roads, and then we have an additional million that has gone through the process with our CIP committee of being allocated towards different projects, whether it's vehicles, whether it's some type of maintenance on a building. So, we actually have 2 million total, 1 million for roads and then one for the other project.
And the City Administrator can speak. That's been consistent for quite a while.
Yes, that's from capital. We also have significant costs that are in the street department that are maintenance costs and personnel costs for snow plowing and things like that. So, this is just for the major resurfacing reconstruction costs. We actually issued some bonds for some of that. So, there are costs in addition, there are budgeted dollars far in addition to the $1 million that go into street maintenance, but not necessarily capital. They're maintenance funds.
Okay. And then my last question would be, and it doesn't have a page number, but it's the city of Oak Creek and the total levy, and it shows from 2004 to 2017. You know, I understand with the TIFs and with capital debt, obviously, debt is sizable. We're reaching roughly, you know, $100 million. But if you look, and it's just for clarification and just for a point of interest to people if they are following at home, 2004, you're looking at roughly 17 million, and it escalates up to a little over 19.5 million for 2017. That's a sizable jump.
Go ahead.
Comment I'd like to make, if the council would look at, in terms of the tax levy, there's an annual percent tax levy change, 2004 through 2017. There may be the same chart that's being cited. You'll see in the period 2004 through 2008, you see the annual tax levy was at or exceeded the CPI regularly over the last number of years, and particularly of interest for me is since 2010, when I took over this position. You'll see that the tax levy change is far less than the CPI change, and as a percentage basis, the city tax levy is approximately flat. So, the only ability that the city has to raise additional levy dollars from the community is for new construction. As a whole, the community should be seeing really no tax increases back to 2010. And we verified that through various neighborhoods and properties, that we've actually seen some properties paying less than city property taxes today than they were 10 years ago. And that's not an uncommon situation. So, I would certainly point that out, that we have significantly performed better than CPI in terms of maintaining services with revenues that are half or less than CPI.
And then just one final comment that, and Mr. Peterson brings up a good point. Very little of it is coming from the actual revenues. It's coming from the mitigation funds. It's coming from the shared revenue. So, those are dollars that are coming, obviously, into the city. We're not seeing sizable revenue increases. When I checked with the, you know, inspection department, I think 22 permits were pulled for residential homes. So, you know, that's pretty flat-lined, and the majority of dollars that are being spent, you know, clearly through the TIF districts, you know, obviously through Jacksonville Town Square, through Oakview Business Park. I'm not opposed to that. I'm just saying that, and Lake Vista, you're talking about, you know, millions of dollars. So, it's very important for council to be mindful that in order for this to be sustainable, increment value needs to be reached. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any questions from the council? If none, motion on eight.
Bukiewicz will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 116228070715, adopting a three-year financial plan for the city of Oak Creek.
Tomlinson.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz?
Aye.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Tomlin?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Item nine is a consideration of Resolution Number 11629-070715. It approves a storm sewer easement agreement and right-of-way agreement buying between Barrett Visionary Development LLC and the city of Oak Creek, and an access agreement buying among One West Drexel LLC, OWD, Emerald Row LLC, Emerald Row, and Barrett Visionary Development LLC, known as Barrett, and the city of Oak Creek in the 2nd District. City Administrator?
The city has worked with Barrett Visionary on these easements over a period of time. There have been some adjustments to the properties to accommodate particularly the hospital construction. That's where a lot of these CSM changes took place originally, and then required some of these various easements. They're for stormwater access, they're for right-of-way, they're for pedestrian access. All have been negotiated between our staff, city attorney, as well as Barrett and his attorneys. So, we would recommend approval of these various easements.
Any questions? City Attorney Carlos?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just indicate that, as it relates to these agreements and the easement agreement, I would ask that any motion be subject to technical corrections as approved by the city attorney's office. The reason for that is, I can point to a particularity as it relates to the access agreement. These documents have been revised, drafted, in progress for a considerable period of time. A large nod should be to Attorney Haskin in pulling this together on the city's part as far as these documents as well. But to that end, I would just indicate that this was prior to the sale of Lot 1 between One West Drexel and Emerald Row LLC. So, that's a reason for some cleanup, basically.
And I would concur in that. We know that there's one or two little technical corrections over that period of time that need to be adjusted. Do not change in any substantial form these things, but there's some very minor changes.
Where's, I know Rick has his fences up. Where is he at with his?
We're expecting him to be out there and start footings and foundations. He's got those permits. He's got his financing in place. Money's been put in escrow to begin that, so we're expecting that any day. He could be out there tomorrow. I know his contractor is itching to be out there. He's got a nice site that's, he's got his silt fences up and his construction fence, so it is imminent.
Mike, did you have a comment?
Say that Brian Johnson was out at the site yesterday, that he has his construction fence up. As Jerry mentioned, all this is, the road control's in place, and I understand that trucks are removing dirt today, so they are underway.
All right. Any other questions on nine? Do they need to add that language to the motion?
Just so.
The technical, subject to technical corrections by the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Whoever makes the motion, please add that.
Bukiewicz will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11629070715, approving a storm sewer easement agreement and right-of-way agreement buying between Barrett Visionary Development LLC and the city of Oak Creek, and an access agreement by and among One West Drexel LLC, Emerald Row LLC, Barrett Visionary Development LLC, and the city of Oak Creek, subject to technical corrections by the city attorney's office. Kuzakowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukiewicz?
Aye.
Verhalen?
Aye.
Tomlin?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Item 10 is a consideration of Resolution Number 11627-070715, approving a certified survey map for the property at 8001 South Sixth Street in the 2nd District. Doug?
Yeah, this, thank you, this minor land division, their certified survey map will amend the existing boundaries of both lots one and three. Again, very similar, taking place on the heels of your recent approval of those easement documents. The adjustment was to provide for public street access for the, I believe it was Lot number three, which previously had been landlocked, that was necessary in order to accommodate the public water and sewer, which by PSC rule, correct me if I'm incorrect, Mike, needed to be through a, can't go through somebody else's property, has to be direct to the street right-of-way.
Okay, questions? Motion?
Bukiewicz will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11627070715, approving a certified survey map for the properties at 8001 South Sixth Street, subject to technical corrections by the city attorney's office. Do we need that one in there for this one? Not really, eh? It's engineering. Okay, scrap the second part.
I think it's good to go.
Okay.
Did I get a second?
Kuzakowski will second.
Kuzakowski seconds, roll call.
Alderman Verhalen?
Aye.
Tomlin?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Bukiewicz?
Aye.
Item 11 is a consideration of a motion to amend the professional service agreement with Smith Group JJR for Lake Vista Design Services in an amount not to exceed $170,000.
I would note for the council and the audience that we have Dave Walmit from JJR here, if there are any additional questions after I make a brief presentation. This amendment was not unanticipated when we originally entered into the various professional service agreements. If you remember, we had those for the various areas of Lake Vista development. We didn't know exactly what the design would be through the design committee. Since we've gone through that process, particularly the public support building has gotten more of a building design than was originally contemplated, and there's been additional efforts on some of the improvements throughout the park than was anticipated. So, the request is for an adjustment, and the request was for $161,900. I'm suggesting that that go to $170,000, because the request did not include construction, inspection. Talking with city engineer, we felt that there needs to be some construction inspection from the designers out at the site, so we've added some dollars there. There's also some variable dollars within that original $161,000 that's likely going to be used for some construction inspection. Give the council and the community a little bit of perspective and background on this. We've approved for the Lake Vista improvements a number of professional services contract. I have a total, including the extension of Fifth Avenue, which we've done, been working on for about three years. We've got about $1.1 million in professional service fees for that, which is, I think, reasonable based on the extent and the complexity of the work that's out there. The work that JJR has been approved for up to this point is just under $300,000. It's $299,000. We've been operating on a, basically, an 8% fee basis for the construction work that's out there. The request that we have in front of us tonight keeps that 8%, which is a very, very good engineering and design fee for, in this case, about $5.5 million worth of work in terms of the Lake Vista development. So, a big chunk of this money, almost $100,000, is for the professional services of Rinka Chung Architects. They've done, I think, some great work in the design of the building. It's not your typical log or open structure, so obviously, a lot more work involved in that kind of thing. Makes this project, in my view, kind of a really special project, and I think it's money well-spent.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Alderman Verhalen?
I've got a couple of questions, since I wasn't here in 2014, but one question would be, what were the difficulties in coordination with Milwaukee County as to the connection to Bender Park?
Yep.
Why they weren't included, why they were put off or not included?
Yeah, a couple. We had tremendous difficulty. We'll talk about a project that we are doing right now, that we had some pretty substantial difficulties in working with county, and that's the extension of the Lake Vista Drive that's underway right now. We have a shared intersection as our road goes to the west at the end of Old Ryan Road, and then the rest of the road goes into the park. We had some great difficulty with the county in terms of getting the necessary right-of-way and easements to be able to do that work. We were prepared to actually abandon the work that you see out there because of the lack of response from them. From the specific issue that you're referencing, we're talking about the lakefront access, so it's down at the bottom of the slope. That property is owned by the county in terms of their water rights. We had some pretty significant engineering challenges to put that connection, that water level connection, and we did not feel that we would be able to negotiate with the county any kind of shared costs and access in a reasonable amount of time. That is not part of the project that's being dropped. It's one that we would be doing at a different date. So, we do have an access point between Bender Park, the county park, and our property that's actually gravelled, as I understand it now. It's a bike path that's connecting the gravel path, if you know that site, and I'm sure you do out there, that's in the county property that's connecting over into the Lake Vista property. So, that was one part of our cooperative efforts.
So, in all actuality, the, almost a million dollars, a little bit more than a million dollars, that was going to go for that project is going for the?
It's shifting, it's shifting to the park and playground and structures and terrace areas. So, those dollars have shifted from what was basically a pathway into more intense design opportunities.
All right, and then, if that, if that proposed connection ever comes about with the county, do you foresee it in the next couple of years, and how will that be funded, then?
Well, there's a number of opportunities for that funding. The city is anticipating that it's going to have property sales at Lake Vista. We've identified three parcels for potential sale. Could take the proceeds from the sale of those properties and do that. We're also intending to bring to the council in the spring of next year, TIF district down there, for some additional improvements beyond what we're providing for in the current work with JJR. So, there's a couple of different funding sources potentially for that.
And I have one?
There's also grants potentially. There's Coastal Zone Management Grant, there's any number of bike path grants.
All right, and I'm looking at the overhead map here of the various shelters and their locations on the lake bluff and whatnot, and I was wondering if, and this would go to the design person that's in the audience here, if any consideration was given to, because I see on C2 and C1 in particular, where you're down over next to the lake bluff, what type of access do you have to those facilities, like for emergency vehicles or police if they have to get down there?
Can you just identify for the record?
Yeah, I'm Dave Walmit. I'm a civil engineer and the project manager for this project for Smith Group JJR. I'm a civil engineer and the project manager for this project for Smith Group JJR. I didn't bring the entire slideshow along, but you see, I'm looking at the diagram on page seven of seven. I assume that's the same one you're, you're looking at.
Yeah.
And you can see kind of a looping road that runs south, and it loops back to the north, and then it, it loops back to the south. That's evolved quite a bit from the drawing you're looking at here, but the northern path that you see, that's being designed as a 12-foot wide path to provide emergency access for vehicles to, to get from shelter to shelter and also down to the bluff for emergency purposes. There's also a third path that is not drawn on this diagram that kind of splits between those two. That's designed with a wall and with much shallower slopes, so it provides ADA access for persons with, with disabilities. But we're maintaining a wider way that we anticipate is going to be less used by pedestrians, but we're, you know, it's in there strictly to provide the emergency access.
Yeah, I, I had some reservations as to the proximity of those shelters to, you know, the, the street traffic and whatnot, because it seems to me they're, they're pretty much off by themselves, and you don't really have a lot of area where you can even observe what's going on down there. And I know even in, in, in particular, some of the county's park facilities that they have, when you do that, you know, they tend to be vandalized, they tend to have, you know, parties going on with kids and whatnot down there, and, you know, I'd kind of like to see where we got ample access and possibly some lighting or something down there, so if, you know, we have to run down there at night, we can see where we're going, and you can see what's going, actually going on down there.
Just also expand on that point. I think that's a, that's a good observation. Very early on in this process, when we had public input, we had police and fire there, they made that same point that we needed to make sure that we had access throughout the, throughout the bluff area. That was designed into the program right from the beginning because we heard those comments about the access, the emergency access, what happens if someone partially down the bluff, as well as these lighting issues. So we have actually all of that there. There's likely going to be cameras out at this site because of its remoteness right now. That's going to be one of the safety features we've got and help with some of the issues that we've had in some of our more remote areas.
Yeah, I, I've had a, a chance to talk with police chief, not on this particular issue, but in regards to some of the stuff that goes on down in Bender Park by the facilities of down below the bluff there, and there's considerable mischievous things that go on down there, so it's, it's something that, you know, you got to be on top of before we get the thing designed and-
The sooner we can activate, the sooner we can activate the space, the better we are from a parks area as well as the private area. That's been a, a constant theme of our discussions. We think that that will help a lot in terms of any mischief that may be perpetrated, that's likely to be perpetrated at some point over the time.
It's, it's, it's better to everyone to be, for everyone to be proactive on stuff like this, because we don't want our police, I guess, and fire down there numerous times when, when they shouldn't have to be there, because we got a big city to patrol, you know?
Yep, we've, we've, that's been a focus right from the beginning.
All right.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman?
Just to clarify, I apologize, I'm losing my voice as we go on here. Just to clarify the dollar amounts, are we basically just amending the, are we going from the 161,900 to 170? Is that what's-
No, the, the 170,000 is additional beyond what's been approved. I think the, the, the professional service agreements were all approved in 2014. It was November 4th or 5th, something like that. So there was a series of professional service agreements with JJR that were approved. There was originally kind of a scoping contract that I think was about $60,000 that did kind of the scope and scale of that. Then as we started to identify a little bit more what we were going to build, there were individual contracts for the, the terrace and access area, the park and playground area, and then the connection to the Bender Park. There were three separate contracts. Those have really now been compressed into the access in the playground. The dollars have been shifted there, and there's an additional effort beyond what was a more simple effort for the connection to more complex efforts, and, and the professional service costs are consistent with that. So you're actually adding $170,000 to the existing professional services agreement. $96,000 of those are for architectural services.
Okay, so on page two of three, the eight percent figure is, is mentioned there?
Yes, it's-
Okay, and then on the backside, there's a 9.18 reference. Is that applied to the, is that different and, or over and above the eight percent?
No, the, the, the cost for the professional services are eight percent for the, for the projects here. You've got, you've got five and a half million dollars in total project cost, and I think with this approval, we'd be at about $470,000 in professional cost.
Which equals the 9.18. Excuse me, where does the 9.18 come in then? On that backside? Page, page three of three. Under revised total.
That showing $5 million in construction cost, we have a total of 5.5 million.
Which brings us to the 9.18. Correct?
Well, if you're using 5 million, but that's, that's not the number.
It's not the number.
The actual number's higher than 5, which drops it to eight percent.
I got you.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
For Dave, many of the design decisions for the Lake Vista project were made by extensive meetings with a pretty large citizen group. Lots of meetings.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And those are ongoing. I think we've reached, we've reached a pretty good consensus, I think, on the site work, but the architectural component is, is still ongoing. We're, we still have quite a bit of back and forth.
Okay.
And I think one point, one point of note is the, the small citizens in participating. Mayor, I think you're aware of that. I think we had 500 students from one of the schools participate in their request for the design, so I think that that was really a, a good outreach to the folks who are going to be using this and importantly got that input.
It seemed like rather than have adults tell kids what kind of stuff they'd want to play on, it made sense to talk to kids.
What an amazing idea, right?
No.
All right, any other questions for 11? Motion on 11.
Tillman will make a motion to amend the professional service agreement with Smith Group JJR for Lake Vista Design Services in an amount not to exceed $170,000.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Bukiewicz?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
All right, item 12 is a motion to award the request for proposal of the Fire Station One Communication Tower Design Project. Caesar's here, welcome.
Well, this project is to put in, replace the existing cell tower that we have here at the old Fire Station One, and to design and place a new tower for the radios and communication antennas for the city at the new Fire Station One. The cell tower would be on the east side of the building, approximately 35 feet east of the east wall of the building, and somewhat in front of the north of the generator there, if you were to align it in, in that area. Basically, what we're doing is, when the city demolishes the buildings on this site, our radios and network, our data network connections, which are housed in the boiler room at Fire Station One, will need to be relocated because we won't be able to provide data network connections and power to them. So we're going to relocate them down to Fire Station One at a new communications tower there. And this, this proposal here, we're affirmed to design the, the location of the tower there, the, the ground ring around it, and the footings, and evaluate soil borings. We already have some soil borings at that location, but this is for that. So if you look at the, and you probably haven't had much time to read this because I just turned this in tonight, unfortunately, the, the RFQ was submitted last Thursday at 11:00, so with the holidays, that made it very tight to evaluate and decide who the best firm was for that project. The, we already have, the fire department has already gotten FAA approval for a 145-foot tower at that location. The proposed tower will accommodate three VHF antennas, three UHF antennas, and six data satellite dishes, which satellite dishes are 24 inches in diameter, each one of them. And it also, if we build it for potential future carriers, it could accommodate up to three additional carriers of some sort, whether it be other communication networks or satellite carriers, whatever we determine is in our best interest.
Similar to what happens now.
Similar to what happens now, yes. Our current carriers at this tower were generating approximately $35,000 a year per carrier. We do not have any potential carriers or clients at this time for the new tower, which I mentioned in there. RFQ was advertised, we had two firms submit bids for, or reply to the RFQ, and based upon the evaluation of the two firms, we selected Strand as the lowest bidder, and I would like to say at this point, both firms had extensive experience with cell towers, communication towers, city and municipal towers and antennas. So it wasn't a, a situation where one firm was overwhelmingly decisive as far as experience and abilities, but the price was a factor, and Strand is a local firm as well, and we've dealt with Strand in the past.
Okay.
Any questions?
Alderman Kerkowski.
Caesar, is this, this tower here coming down when everything else gets demolished?
The school district currently owns this tower, and as far as I'm aware, they are developing, the city is not responsible to take the tower down when the, when the buildings get demolished here, but the school district is entertaining the idea of relocating that tower to a different place on its property.
Okay.
But I, we, we have a meeting scheduled with them, but we don't know exactly at this point where that's going to be or what their exact plans are.
A meeting with the superintendent at 2:00 tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon, I'll ask him.
Okay, we have one scheduled, I believe, for July 20th. Is that right, Mike? We can discuss that.
The rest of my question then is moot because I don't know what's going on. Thank you.
Mayor Scalfitti?
Mm-hmm.
Arden Dugger, 8540, South Pennsylvania Avenue. This is an unfortunate situation where this tower was originally installed by a communication firm that wanted the use of it. Now, my first question is, all this communication expenditure is just throwing money away that we are, cannot recoup at the moment from this beautiful installation that we've got. My first question is, if this is required to communicate, in most cases, I suspect it's all dealing with the police and fire and the state and county, is the City of St. Francis going to be charged a portion of this cost?
I, I can answer that. The, the original tower, just to give you a little history, when I negotiated the original tower, Verizon came to us and agreed to build that tower and deed it over to the city at no cost to us. The exception was that we gave them 10 years of rent for free on that tower, but then we owned that tower. We subsequently, we subsequently leased it to T-Mobile as well and was gaining additional revenue at that. When we sold this property to the school district, the ownership of the tower and the lease payments, the annual lease payments each year, went to the school district, so they are getting the revenue from that tower. At this, at no point did that tower cost the city a dollar. It, it was built for us, and it did not cost us anything. Unfortunately, at this point, we also need to, to pull our radios and our data network back to where we can access them, because we can't, we will no longer have a building on this property or a data line connecting anything there. The antennas on there are police and fire and streets, and of course, our city data network. The city data network backs up the fiber line that we just put in, so if the fiber gets cut, our data will route over the wireless on that tower.
So, there's no aim to charge City of St. Francis for all this communication expense?
None of this has anything to do at all with the City of St. Francis. They do not use any of those frequencies at all, and their frequency is there on the 800 megahertz frequency system right now, and none of those antennas have anything to do with them at all. We do not use those at all for any other municipality, and we don't use them for the county or for any state. Those are strictly city frequencies there.
The next question I have is, from what I have heard in, in the past, Oak Creek has a problem in communication. Will you be able to communicate as easily down next to the new fire station and the water as you are in this higher elevation? Has someone determined that, that you can have as good communication from another tower as you have now?
Yes, we have. Actually, the ground elevation at City Hall here where that tower is, and at the new Fire Station, is almost identical. It's about a foot and a half difference. And the new tower has the ability to be up higher in elevation, because we do have approval for 145 feet instead of the 125 feet that we have here. We don't need the additional feet footage or height for the city antennas currently, but the situation will be, it'll be moved six blocks south roughly, and basically the same elevation. There will be no difference in communication abilities.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Dugger. Alderman Bukiewicz?
Um, I think you kind of got them. Caesar, you said there's going to be 24 satellite-
No, six, up, up to six.
Up to six.
We, 24 inches in diameter there.
24 inches in diameter.
Yeah, there, there, you can see there's two, three of them up now.
And that's strictly for city services, and then-
Those go point-to-point between city buildings.
Okay, and then possibly up to three carriers, private carriers.
Correct.
What, what did we currently have at Fire Station One?
We currently have two carriers on that cell tower now. Verizon's at the top, T-Mobile is 10 feet below them. We have three 18-foot whip antennas pointing up, which, I always forget, which is VHF and UHF, I guess is not important. Then we have three 12-foot antennas pointing down at the 100-foot level. The satellite dishes, there's three of them at the 90-foot level, one points to PD, one points to City Fire Station Three, and one points to the water utility.
Okay.
And we had one additional that we haven't used that's up there.
Regarding the three private carriers, is that kind of the max for a tower that size?
That would be the maximum loading you could put on a tower that size, yes.
And, and then last question, it would, it's paid from funds from reserves in project number 15006. What project is that?
It's the City Communications Tower. I believe it was $200,000 budget.
Oh, we had it in the budget.
Yep, it was approved in the 2015 CIP committee process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions? Seeing none, motion on 12?
Bukiewicz will make a motion to award the request for proposal of the Fire Station One Communication Tower Design Project. Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Bukiewicz?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Item 13 is a motion, a consideration of motion approved the 2015 vendor summary report on the amount of $3,63,373.81. City Finance Director is here to answer any of your questions. Seeing none, motion?
Just a comment?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just point out for the public, 2 million of that is to corporate contractors for City Hall, Library, and Fire Station. That is the lion's share of it, so.
Good point. Anything else?
Nope.
Motion?
Kevich will make a motion to approve the 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $3,63,373.81.
Tolman will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Kevich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Under Community Development, item 14 is a motion to authorize the city administrator to enter a renewal marketing contract with the Packers Radio Network to promote the city of Oak Creek for the 2015 and 16 season in an amount not to exceed $24,620. Doug?
Thank you. Two years ago, the city began a partnership with the Packers, I'm sorry, the Journal Broadcast Group, which is the Packers Radio Network, to market the city on pre- and post-game programming for Packers games, both preseason and regular season. The proposal before you this evening extends that partnership and should be throughout the 2015-2016 season. The details of that proposal are contained in the attached document. The details really have not changed, save for a modest increase in the broadcasting fees. The community development has considered this proposal at the meeting of June 4th. They have recommended that that contract for 2015-16 be approved. Just a couple of things of note, I mean, we do provide some general numbers as far as reach of the Packers Radio Network, and while we don't have specific numbers as far as listenership for our segment because it's a 30-second spot and the four 30-second spots during the course of the pre- and post-game, it does speak as to the reach of the radio network. And one thing I will note as well, and this becomes important as we talk about, you know, the source of funds for this, and the potential source, that network, that coverage map coincides very closely with what we have found the tourism market for the airport gateway area to be under a separate study that was done with the Gateway Area Business Association and the State Department of Tourism. We did a study analyzing the developed patterns from where major tourism for the region was coming by that element, the gateway hotel area. And a lot of that, the bulk of that was coming from the areas upstate such as Wasaw and then those areas, which is an area that's, which is obviously covered by the Packers Radio Network. So should the city decide to, again, renew this partnership, and should the city decide to make this marketing message more tourism-related, I think it's a really good fit with the audience of the Packers Radio Network. I think it's ultimately also a very good fit, given what we believe to be the version of the budget that we approve by the state, which requires a 70% of their hotel room tax dollars to be allocated towards tourism expenses. Obviously, there are some nuances in that and which allow the city to retain a greater portion of that, and I believe it's capped, or the ceiling is at your 2009 level. So, which is, you know, it's not ideal for the city, but it's certainly better than some of the proposals that had come out prior to that. So bottom line is, the CDA felt that the city's brand has been very well received in the marketplace, and the Packers Radio Network advertising is about one portion of the city's brand identity that they continue for the 2015-2016 season.
Thank you. Questions? Citizen comment?
Just a quick question, Timmy Grabowski again, and possibly Doug could answer this. For the $24,620, if you're talking about roughly 30-second ads, can you give an example of what would be within that 30-second ad? Are we looking at just specifically branding Oak Creek?
Yeah, it certainly is specific to Oak Creek. It's not, we're not sharing that with any other adjacent communities at this point. It's strictly for Oak Creek. I'd certainly be welcome, I can share those 30-second spots that we did in the previous two years with you if you'd like to see those.
Oh, no, no, I just wanted to make sure that we're focusing directly doing the branding on Oak Creek, and I'm sure that you-
Yeah, it's solely Oak Creek.
Okay, good. Second question, just for mayor for clarification, Market Point Media, any conflict of interest, anything going on that would pertain directly through to this? Family members, nothing? Okay, all right, thanks very much.
You're welcome. Alderman Verhaelen.
Yeah, this seems like a good idea on the surface. I guess, I don't know how much results you've had out of it, but it seems to me if the city's going to promote itself, and it's nothing against the Packer organization or what we're getting a bang for the buck out of that advertising, but it seems to me if we're, if we're going to advertise this city, this is kind of a one-dimensional approach. I mean, it's a seasonal thing, and you're only getting it during the Packer game. So I was kind of wondering if we're looking at radio advertising, why aren't we looking at more of a year-round type thing and just choosing to advertise on certain radio stations when there's other events going on in Milwaukee, such as the State Fair, the races at the State Fair Park, you know, there's other things that are going on in Milwaukee all the time. But if we're going to bring people into the city, you have to, you have to kind of focus on the things that are going on in Milwaukee to kind of fit in with that as far as our hotels and restaurants and whatnot. So I was just wondering if-
Sure.
It'd be more prudent for us to look into a wider range of things just in general on the radio versus just focusing on-
Couple of different observations for that. I think that early on, the CDA and the council by virtue of their prudish identified the Packers as a very strong brand, probably the strongest brand in the state of Wisconsin, if not, you know, throughout the country. And the option to align yourself with that brand pays more dividends beyond the 40, 30-second spots that you have during game day. I think the ability to identify yourself as a sponsor of the Packers Radio Network on all of your, you know, your media is something that no other community in this market can say.
But what does it, what does it actually bring to the city? Like I said, it seems to me it's kind of one-dimensional, and it's seasonal besides.
Yeah, I'll answer that in a second part. I mean, you're right, I mean, ROI is really difficult to pinpoint on this. Can I say that a business has moved to Oak Creek because they heard us on the Packers Radio Network? No, I can't tell you that directly. But I can tell you that the Oak Creek brand, of which this is a significant part of, has been well-received throughout, I can tell you that it's been well-received throughout the brokerage community. I believe that if you speak to our business community, they'll say the same thing. Answering your question about the one-dimensional nature of this, this isn't the only method that we use for our advertising promotions. We do have additional web-based advertising promotions. We use that for banners, for instance. There are opportunities to drive other types of media. It's really driven by cost, and the CDA and by virtue of the council thought this was a cost-effective way of obviously partnering with a very strong brand and getting our message out to a very, an audience that was very comparable towards our business partners and our potential tourists base. Yeah, and we, and you're talking about media, you're talking about radio, but we obviously try to stretch our everlasting promotion dollars as far as we can. And to that extent, we have targeted more of our print media towards not only the South Suburban Chamber advertising kit and their programs, but we've also identified as part of something that the state is doing in their WEDC towards targeted business groups, we've taken out some significant ad space. So that we're targeting, again, our local businesses through the South Suburban Chamber, and we're targeting what is our client base essentially, is that is other businesses throughout the state of Wisconsin and beyond, and bringing that name of Oak Creek to the forefront. So it's not just radio, you know, it's radio, it's print, it's doing different media through our website, social media. It's, we try to, with the, honestly, very limited dollars that we have, we try and maximize the return on those by diversifying.
Finish, Mark?
Didn't really answer my question, but my question was just, my statement was focused more just on the radio part of it. You know, we're putting radio ads out there during the Packers season. So you get, you know, you're 12 or 16 games, so you're advertising for three months out of the year. And there's, there's things, I mean, there's things going on in the area here for the whole year.
Maybe I wasn't, my point was that while the Packers play six, five, six months over the year, I, I can't think of a brand that is on people's minds that it's year-round. I mean, when you mentioned the Packers. Now, everyone's going to say, oh, you know, I remember the city of Oak Creek was on the Packers Radio Network on, you know, September 14th or something like that. But again, associating itself with a positive brand goes well beyond the days that you see that or listen to it on a radio. I guess certainly there are opportunities to advertise and promote yourselves, not only on radio, but we've been obviously approached by, by print, by digital, by TV. It's a matter of what we perceive as getting the most effective use of our limited resources in terms of marketing promotion. So I think, I just want to be clear when I answer your question. If you want the city to explore advertising beyond the Packers Radio Network, we can certainly do that. But the CDA and the council felt that attaching itself to that brand really extended the reach of the advertising promotion beyond those 30-second spots.
I understand that, Doug, but, but my point is, if we're going to try to bring the tourist component to Oak Creek, to patronize the restaurants, patronize the hotels and stuff you got here, I mean, we pretty much have to piggyback on the things and festivities and stuff that are going around, around Milwaukee. You know, so I mean, they have, you know, races at State Fair Park and a certain thing. There's stuff going on for Summerfest. And if you choose, pick and choose when you want to advertise on the radio, and some of the radio stations that do advertise out of the Milwaukee area here are, they expand it to several states.
Oh, sure.
So if people are thinking, well, maybe coming up here to watch the Indy race, and they hear, well, Oak Creek's got all these restaurant venues and hotel venues, you're going to get people coming in for those. If somebody listens to that thing in November on the Packer Network, you know, even if they heard it, they're not going to remember that, that those things are here. I mean, what I'm saying is, use the, use the radio, but focus on, you don't have to, you don't have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, but I think we should look at focusing on advertising the city to piggyback on the events that are here.
And we certainly have an opportunity to do that with the expanded use of our hotel, hotel room tax revenue. I would caution you against taking more of what it sounds like is more of a shotgun approach towards, towards doing that, because I think that the, one of the very positive things about the Packers Radio Network is it's a really focused and sustained message to, to that audience. And we can certainly look at opportunities to target certain events, whether it be IndyFest or, or Summerfest or what have you. But again, for the roughly, you know, $20,000 plus or minus that we've invested in this, and that was deemed to be the most effective use of those dollars.
Finish, Mark?
Yep.
Thank you. Alderman Kerkowski.
I feel like I need to put my plug in for the Brewers. You never mentioned the Brewers. Just jokingly. Anyways, okay. I'd tell you, I'm amazed that, I don't listen to football on radio, but I'm amazed that pre-game and post-game coverage is longer than the actual game. But if you could, you offered Mrs. Grabowski that if you, if you get this spots for this year done, could, could they reduce them to like a CD or something? I just want to, I just want to hear them. I just want to hear what we're, what we're paying for. I'm not opposed to it, but just wanted to-
I think one of the points that was being made has actually been addressed by Alderman Verhaelen, has been addressed by the CDA. They had what I thought was a really interesting program that they discussed and approved, I think at their last meeting or two meetings ago, where they're partnering with the Eritropolis and providing membership for all of our hotels, should they choose to, and I think there were 13, that would then partner city hotels and restaurants with specifically events. They were going to be putting online event packages together that would be promoting the community as part of that. So that's part of, that's another demonstration where the CDA isn't being one-dimensional, they're trying to do different activities. And that, quite frankly, I thought was a really interesting program that they provided, partnering with the hotels and then looking at those special events, museum tours, and then promoting the community through that. So print media, social media, radio media, I can say that the CDA felt that this is a very effective way. They strongly endorsed it. They felt that, like the council, you can't point to anything as an ROI very strictly, but in terms of an associated brand, you know, the, you could do a lot worse than the Packers, and I'm not sure you can do any better. So maybe the Brewers.
Alderman Tolman.
Parts of my question have already been answered. Actually, I agree with Alderman Verhaelen on more of a spread-out approach over the year, instead of just targeting the Packer Network as, just at the radio component part of it. I don't know if we've looked into that in other radio venues, other sports, you know, you've got the Bucks, you've got the Brewers, you've got, and I don't know what the, what the rates were. I'm sure the CDA's got a handle on that, but I'd actually like to see, the next time this comes forth, maybe some choices for the council. Not that we're locked into one, one specific venue, kind of like we do with our bid contracts. I mean, we have choices, and I know that's part of the CDA function and that's determined there, but when this comes to us in the form of whether to say yay or nay, we only have one choice here. So maybe moving forward, we could, we could explore that. I didn't support this the first two times it came out because I felt that we might have been jumping the gun on promoting Oak Creek. Not that it shouldn't have been promoted two years ago, but I think Oak Creek, three years after this first contract, has a lot more to offer. And when Drexel Town Square is mentioned specifically in the advertisement, all it was, was no access in a pile of dirt. Now, we're actually going to be able to be there, so I will support it this time around. But in the future, I would like to see maybe some more choices for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kevich.
I actually got to deal with quite a bit of this stuff, and it is hard to judge the return on investment on this. I have organizations like Brewers, the Badgers, the Packers, and if you really had to pick one that has statewide appeal, I mean, Jerry said it, the brand is probably the strongest in the country with, with the Packers. I have heard our ads, and they kind of go like a great place, they'll live, work, and play, something along those lines. The only bummer is, if they lose on the post-game, nobody hears it, they get pretty pissed off.
Doesn't happen very often.
Doesn't happen, doesn't happen very often.
Yeah. Again, it might be nice if we come up with something, but we do have limited dollars as to what to do. I really do like Jerry's idea of, the airport's right there, it's something that's never going away. If we could entice an airline to say, look, stay in an Oak Creek Hotel and whatever, you get a voucher for a free dinner at a local restaurant.
Yeah, I certainly can provide you an update at a later date about, it's called the Win-Win Milwaukee Program, but I don't want to take up your time this evening.
Right. But again, if we could spread it out, I don't think this is a huge investment for what you get air-wise, from what I've seen from comparable packages. I will say, I think the next best brand for the buck is probably Badger Football, just based on, on listenership. Again, the Brewers is kind of secular, depending on how you go, and a lot of different organizations I'm associated with advertise, so I'm real privy and my ears are real open to it. It does catch you, though, I've been up north as far as Black River Falls and the city of Oak Creek. So again, it's, I don't know if it's so much tourism as, as coming here as a community, as a place to be and conduct business, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Alderman. Some great comments. I want to thank the CDA, I mean, primarily citizen reps on that group, and they've come up with some great ideas. I think I certainly like the proposal to expand the options. Both Alderman Verhaelen and Alderman Tolman made that point, you know, having an idea of some different things we could do, spread it out, spread the money out. I'm not sure what the total amount we spent on print and radio and whatever else we do is, but we should probably find a happy balance between them. And I especially like the local angle. I think that's, as we develop our hotel district and we certainly develop our downtown, those hotels are going to really be key in the future of the city, because that's where people are going to stay, especially one right in Drexel Town Square. So that's something maybe, not this year, but next year, we'll probably have to focus on. Any other questions or comments? Motion.
Kerkowski will make a motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into a renewal marketing contract with the Packers Radio Network to promote the city of Oak Creek for the 2015-2016 season in an amount not to exceed $24,620. Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kevich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Two engineering items. Item 15 is a motion to award the Lake Vista North Bluff soils relocation, project unit price contracted to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, excuse me, RLP diversified at an estimated cost of $474,450. Project number is listed in the fourth district. City engineers here.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked earlier about some of the development projects on the-
We talked earlier about some of the development projects on the Lake Vista site, and that's the south portion of the site, and this, this item is related to the north portion of the site, the former Peter Cooper slash Oak Creek Storage and Handling Site, in which the city owns the property along the, the bluff side of the property, West Park owns the property to the west of that. And basically, this, this project was developed in conjunction with Environ, the environmental engineers that have been working on the, on the sites here on the lakefront with us for several years now. And it is basically just phase one of a multi-phase project that was part of the overall approval, the resolution back in October of 2014 for the various improvement projects on the, on the lakefront. This project specifically deals with the stabilization of the top portion of the bluff and a redistribution of material on the site and a clean soil capping for approximately 50 feet from, back from the bluff top on the site. And this would be in preparation for future phases of the work, which would include a bike path that would traverse the site. And I'll show you with my pointer here, this is Fifth Avenue, and I apologize for the scale of the, of the graphic, but it's quite a large site and trying to get it on one screen. So basically, this is the MMSD property up here, Fifth Avenue here, the Lake Vista South that's currently under construction is down in this area here. Basically, then, the, the bike path would follow along the north property line and then follow along, kinda paralleling the top of the bluff. And then eventually, kind of uncertain now, but once some of the property ownership issues are, are worked out, would sweep down and join up with the pathway that's part of the current project in the south part of the Lake Vista development. So basically, the, the project is funded in large part by a ready-for-use grant through the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, 75% grant, 22% local cost. And the top 15 feet of the bluff would be pulled back, three-to-one slope, and the, and this is very unstable material at this point, and there's, there's erosion that's happening in various locations. There's a historic ravine, approximately this location, which will entail quite a bit of excavation, material identification, very sure that at least some of that material will have to be hauled off-site in landfill at a regulated facility, and that's where some costs can, can start to pile up, but, so we'll have to just monitor as, as the project goes. Bulk of this material will be able to be brought further back on the site and then capped with some clean material that is already stockpiled on the site and a portion of which is also stockpiled on the Lake Vista South site. And that was the clean material that was brought there several years ago and, and is the remainder of that clean capping material. So this plan has all been vetted through Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, is, is the interim remedial action plan, all approved, was advertised as an RFP as opposed to a traditional bid package. And the reason for that was a couple, a couple of things. City attorney had assured us that that was a proper way to bid the project, being that it is primarily earth-moving, earth-moving project. And it allowed us to have the contractors not only give a price for the work, but to give their qualifications, give their technical approach, how they saw best to proceed with the project. And so we scored the proposals that we, that we received on a couple of different categories. So having said that, we did get four proposals. Our recommendation is to go with RLP diversified, their contractor that's currently working in the vicinity, they, they recently raised the old Highnight Building down on this site here, and they were the most responsive to the, to the requirements of the RFP. And we liked their technical approach and they were the second lowest of the bids that we received. So that was the basis for our recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Degen?
Arden Degen, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. With, as I understand it, these bids fall under the state prevailing wage law. Would it be possible just to postpone this for another month to see if we can save money? If, if this is passed by the legislature?
We really don't have time to delay this. This was a pretty short turnaround. We received the proposals on July 2nd, scored, scored the proposals and got the recommendation together and in to get on the agenda. If we were to wait another month, one, the contractors could pull their bids because they, they only, their bid bond is only good for the one month, being that we don't have that second meeting in July. And if we delay the project any further, we, we won't get the work done in time to get it re-vegetated. Yeah. So we, we have a tight timeframe to, to complete this work.
Thanks for your question, Mr. Degen. Any other comments?
Yeah, the, excuse me, and also, the other thing is that we don't have assurance that we can, that we will have this grant if we don't do this work this year, so that's, that's, that's big.
Good point. Alderman Verhaelen?
Just two questions. As far as the RLP versus the low bidder, which was Vite, what, what criteria didn't the lower bidder make that we chose the second highest bid?
They, they did not have a technical approach at all. They did not talk about their, their qualifications on doing projects of similar size. Basically, all they gave us was the, the price and the schedule, and their schedule basically was, we'll do it in 45 days. So there was no detail to their, to their schedule. So they scored, they scored highly because of the price, we gave them some points for schedule, we gave them zeros on the rest.
Well, the reason I ask is because I, I know they were quite involved with the remediation and site work at the Northwest Mutual Building downtown Milwaukee, so I know they have the experience and the wherewithal to do the work.
They do, you know, and as we evaluated these proposals, you know, we, you know, our consideration was, you know, we've, we've heard of them, we haven't seen them work in, in, in our city, but we, all we could do was go by the letter of what we asked them to provide us, and we thought it would be improper to start making phone calls and saying, hey, can, what do you, what can you tell us about this? And so that, that was it. You know, we've talked, we've talked to them since then, when they were wondering, why aren't we the recommendation? We explained that to them and I guess is where we are.
And as far as the contract goes, is this for just the, the material they have to move onsite, or does this cover all the disposal costs too, or are they gonna be able to put in extras for that?
This is the, this is for the material on the site. So they have given us a price for hauling a, an estimated quantity to a landfill, but tipping fees are not included, so that would be a cost above and beyond.
All right. So we're, we're pretty open-ended, if they got a lot of contaminated soils and one that that gotta be hauled out of there, we're, we're in for extra charges over and above the $474,000.
Okay, that's correct.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Toman?
Is that a number, that 474, Mike, is that about what we anticipated on this? Or is, did we have a number in mind moving into this?
Jerry's telling me a number of 1.3, but I think, Jerry, that included the bike path and, okay, right, yeah. The, purely the earthwork, we had a number that, 700,000, I didn't know if you wanted me to say it out loud, but that's, that's, that's the number that we had in mind.
Okay. And if we approve this tonight, what, what's the timetable? When do they start?
They have indicated that they can, they can get started here very quickly, so what we would need to do is if we make the award, we'd be to get them the contract, get that signed, and, and the sooner we could get them going, the better, because as they get this work completed, they need to stabilize that slope just as, as quickly as they can so we can take advantage of some growing weather yet this year.
Okay.
And what we liked about their technical approach was that they intended to take on sections at a time and get it restored as they move on, rather than having it all tore up at, at one time and restoring it at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions? Motion on 15.
Toman will make a motion to award to Lake Vista North Bluff Soil's Relocation Project Unit Price Contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, RLP diversified at an estimated cost of $474,450. Project number 14035.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call?
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
An item 15 is a consideration of resolution number 11592-070715, a resolution granting to We Energies a 15-foot by 25-foot permanent electric, electric easement at 8040 South Sixth Street in the second district.
This is for a, this is, We Energies accommodating a city request for a new service to accommodate the street lighting controller that will be servicing all the streetlights, public streetlights in the Drexel Town Square development. And per our request, the, Doug, would you be able to zoom in just a little bit? Just to get you oriented here, basically, the controller would go right in this location here, and so this is, this is the, the town square, this is the future hotel site, this is the City Hall library site, Market Street comes down, extends and, and comes around here, Sixth Street. So just to get you oriented, this would be basically at the south, kinda the southeast corner of Market and Clock Tower Way. And then what, what is here is that pedestrian pathway that, that would extend between Myers and, and basically the City Hall. So just right down in that, in that corner, it's a 25-by-15-foot rectangular area that would have the transformer and the meter for the, the controller cabinet itself. And, and basically, this is We Energies' policy, is if they put in new facilities, they, they basically have been requiring that they, that these facilities be placed in easements across private property, and that is for their protection. If they are required to be moved in the future, then they can be compensated for that move.
Alderman Bukavich?
Landscaping planned around it, a little bit the height, it's seen it is right off the square.
Jerry, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
One of the things we're, we're actually looking at in some of these boxes is there's some wraps that you can put along these, and you can put artwork or you can kind of hide them with that. Doug, you actually picked this stuff up on the West Coast some number of months before. I thought it was really kind of a neat deal, and we think we could be kind of a leader in the area on that. There are these wraps that get custom-made on these boxes that can do either promotional brand recognition or try to camouflage it. I've sent that to Rinke Chung, who's doing the architectural work there, as well as Jerry Frankie overall, and they've been favorable to that. Now, We Energies would have to agree to that because it's their property, but we'd really like to try that on some of these so that we can do what I suspect you're thinking, try to hide them as much as we can so that they're not sitting there as the, the green, I wouldn't say green giant, but the green, you know, they're not very attractive.
No, the one by Water Street looks terrible.
So we're gonna try, we're gonna try that if we can. There is actually no landscaping, I think, allowed in that easement. I think that's one of the items that we had.
Yeah, they only don't.
That's right, that pedestrian easement that gets from the, the connects, kind of the town square area and the Meyer areas and easement, and, and there aren't landscaping permitted in it, actually.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Kuzikowski?
My questions were answered.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Motion on 16.
Kevich will make a motion to adopt resolution number 11592-070715, resolution granting to We Energies 15-by-25 permanent electric easement at 8040 South Sixth Street.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call?
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
And finally, licensing? Alderman Kerkowski?
Okay, the license committee did not meet prior to the July 7, 2015 meeting. Recommendations are as follows. Number 17, motion to consider, or Kerkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 29 individuals listed on the agenda, and Mr. Mayor, I'll note that 19 of those are new employees for Water Street Brewery and Myers.
Excellent. Awesome.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call?
Two weeks.
Yeah, it sounds like two weeks.
Alderman Kuzikowski?
Second?
Yay, yay.
Were you napping?
Well, it was a little curveball there.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Okay. Yay.
All right, so 18?
18. Kerkowski will make a motion to grant a temporary Class B beer and wine license with a waiver of fees to the Oak Creek OJs for the period of August 1st through August 2nd, 2015, with rain dates August 8th through August 9th, 2015.
Phil Crick will be very happy.
Verhaelen, second.
Verhaelen, seconds. Roll call?
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
All right, thanks for watching, thanks for being here. Mr. Degen, have a great night.
Thank you.